Voters in Mililani and Mililani Maoka have put a Republican in office in three consecutive elections since 2012. This year voters must choose between Republican Val Okimoto, a political newcomer, and veteran Democrat Marilyn Lee. On Hawaii Island, political newcomers Kelly Drysdale and Rebecca Viegas are in a runoff for the seat representing parts of North and South Kona on the county council. Tonight's live broadcast and livestream of Insights on PBS Hawaii start now.
Aloha and welcome to Insights on PBS Hawaii. I'm Yanji Denise. General Election Day is just under three weeks away. We have two races for you tonight, starting with two candidates running for State House District 36. Democrat Marilyn Lee against Republican Valerie Okimoto. After a quick change, we move to Hawaii Island for the race for County Council District 7, featuring Rebecca Chute-Viegas and Kelly Drysdale. We look forward to your participation in tonight's show. You can email, call, or tweet us your questions, and you'll find a livestream of this broadcast at PBSHawaii.org and on the PBS Hawaii Facebook page. As always, we want to acknowledge our volunteers who will be taking your questions tonight, PBS Hawaii friends and family. There you see a live shot of them eagerly awaiting your input to tonight's show. Now to our guests running for the State House District 36, which represents Mililani, Mililani Maoka, and Waipio on Oahu. Democrat Marilyn B. Lee is a retired registered nurse and a community volunteer who has served on many community boards and state commissions. She represented the area from 1996 to 2012. Republican Valerie Okimoto is a substitute teacher. She was raised on Leihue, Kauai, and has lived in Mililani for more than 15 years. She's also active as a community volunteer on various school and community boards. Welcome to you both. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lee, I want to start with you, and this is a question for both of you. If elected, what is the first issue that you'd like to address in the legislature?
The first issue I'd like to address in the legislature, there really are a lot of issues this year that are coming up, and I think it's going to be a very difficult year. But one of the things I've been involved in this year is disaster preparedness. And so that's one of the things I'm very interested in addressing, especially since we've had, as you know, volcanoes and floods and storms and whatever kind of disaster. And I think we're not really prepared, and I have a lot of ideas because I've been participating in the first Mililani disaster preparedness team.
What specifically do you think that we're not doing that the legislature could actually change and do differently?
Well, actually, communities are what really needs to change, and people in communities are going to have to start taking some responsibility because if there is a major storm, especially for a place like Mililani, we probably won't, we'll be kind of isolated for a while. But there are things that we're learning in the course that we're taking, preparing us to be helpful in the neighborhood, things like what we can do to harden our houses, to make them less susceptible to having the roof blow off. And some of those things are very expensive, so I'm thinking about introducing a bill that might give a tax break for people who do do things like hurricane clips or do things that would harden the house, buy protection for the windows and other kinds of things that would help them to stay in their home to, in place, because there are no shelters in Mililani.
Mrs. Okimoto, same question for you. If you are to be elected, what's the first issue that you'd like the legislature to address?
Well, I want to first of all, thank you for having me on the show. This is my first time, as I mentioned, so thank you to PBS and also Marilyn Lee for inviting, having me on the show and inviting me, letting me share my views and my reasons for running. You know, just to back up, one of the main reasons I decided to run for office was because I felt that the people in our area really are yearning for change. And as I've walked door to door, I've heard many concerns and many issues brought up. One of the main things that I've heard repeatedly, which aligns with why I ran, was they're looking for honest, good people who are going to be trustworthy and be their voice in government. As a mom of two young daughters here who go to the public schools in our district in Mililani, I feel that I have a vested interest, and I also understand the needs of the people in our district. What I would like to take back to the Capitol is to, again, be that voice. The people in Mililani are looking for leaders who are listening to what they're saying. I've heard many issues while walking door to door, such as cost of living, traffic, education. Education will always be dear to me because I stem from, I come from an education background. I'm, you know, a teacher in the system in the DOE today. I was a full-time special education teacher, and now I'm a substitute teacher. But what I really want to focus on, not one issue specifically, but more importantly, being that voice for the people, I heard that repeatedly, walking door to door.
You know, this show is different than most because we have viewer engagement, and we want to encourage that. And we already have a question Travis in Mililani is asking you tonight. Why are you running as a Republican, since there seems to be too few in the legislature to make much of a difference? What would you say to Travis?
Oh, I got asked that so many times while walking door to door. You know, being a local girl here, growing up in Hawaii, it's not a popular, common thing to run as a Republican. But I personally align my values and my views with the Republican Party when it comes to things as limited government, lower taxation, having a focus on family and education, as well as instilling or advocating for self-reliance and being independent, with individuals having self-reliance and independence. You know, as a minority, as a party, a member of the minority party, I believe that my focus would be to offer that loyal opposition to the majority, to keep them honest and keep, you know, government transparent and have them be, you know, answer to the people. And that's really why I'm running. I really want to offer the people their voice, because their voices matter.
Okay. Well, we want to ask a question to both of you, and it's actually a question that a lot of voters will be, all voters will be facing in the current ballot, and that is the proposal to give the state the power to tax investment properties to support public education. The ballot question we're talking about, if we could put it up here, shall the legislature be authorized to establish, as provided by law, a surcharge on investment real property to be used to support public education? Let's start with you. How do you feel about this initiative?
Yes, I've always been active in the schools in our community. My, all of my children attended our Mililani Public Schools. And I started off being a PTSA president, moved on to SCBM, moved on to SEC, and I still am on the SEC School Community Council at Mililani High School. I support the constitutional amendment, and I think we really hear every meeting at schools how much is needed in the schools, if it's not buildings, if it's facilities. But teacher salaries is another really big thing, and we have to really think about how many teachers are leaving our community because they can't afford to stay here.
What do you think about the language of the bill itself, though? I mean, is, a lot of people say it might be too vague.
Well, the, you know, I, we had a forum at the Neighborhood Board last month, and Corey Rosenly from HSTA and Ms. Menor from the Chamber of Commerce came, and they, they talked about it in between the two of them. And one of the things that Corey said was that, basically, it's something that is going to start a conversation at the legislature. It's only the idea of doing it. It's got to go to the legislature, there's got to be implementation, there's got to be, talk about exactly what the cost of the houses that are going to be taxed. And there's a lot to be decided before it actually is implemented. So, you know, and the language is very vague, but that's actually how the constitutional amendments are phrased. But on the Neighborhood Board as well, Senator Kidani was there, and she stated that when the bill first passed, that she wanted to have clarification of the constitutional amendment. But the House did not agree to that, so it went forward as it was.
You know, I wonder where you stand on this issue, just because as an educator, I'm sure you have one opinion, but as a Republican, of course, you just mentioned that you advocate for lower taxes. So where do you fall on this?
Well, as an educator, like you said, I'll always, you know, support the funding of education programs. However, with the way this current bill is written, it is very unclear and ambiguous. We don't know what exactly is going to be an investment property. It's not clearly defined. We don't know if it's, if a local homeowner is going to be affected if it's his first property. I think today in the State Supreme Court, there was a question, and it was brought to the attention, that that might be a person's initial income, initial home, or it might be the second property. We don't know the effects of renters. Will local families who rent homes be affected by the cost being passed on to them? And while I always, again, support the funding of education, my concern is, because I have been in the classroom, I still am in the classroom, where exactly are the funds going to go with the bill being so vague and unclear? And I think it's, I, it's ironic, well, it's annoying to say when the bill is unclear. We need to make the bills clear so that people understand it. It's, it's very hard for us normal people who live day to day to understand these things and be able to make a decision, a big decision like this. So I personally, the way the bill is written, I do not support it in its current state. I feel like we need to specify what investment property is, and until that is clearly defined, I do not support kanam.
Okay.
Well, it will be the job of the legislature to actually determine much of what will happen so that, you know, as I said, it's basically starting a conversation. And I think it is a problem for some people who want to know specifically what is going to be taxed. And there are many people who live on their investment income, so that, that's a concern. And, you know, some people don't really, because we have a kan-kan and a kan-am being offered for the voters, some of them really don't even know the difference between each. But that's why it's important for communities to have forums like we had at the Neighborhood Board. And I think the people on our Neighborhood Board understand it a lot better after we had that.
Jim in Mililani has a question for you, Mrs. Lee. You've run several times before. What makes you a viable candidate this time?
Well, I think, well, the Star Advertiser endorsed me today, so I think, they think I'm a viable candidate. This is an open seat, and during the six years that I've been away from the legislature, I've been extremely active, as I was even before I ever became a legislator. But I think I've learned a great deal more in the six years that I've been out than actually in some of the years I was in the legislature. I've worked with the homeless, I've participated in the point-in-time count of the homeless, I've participated in the food banks for the homeless, and just two weeks ago, I participated and helped plan a retreat for homeless women. And we had about 30 homeless women. We had a wonderful day where we had talks about domestic violence, nutrition, and health. We had someone come in to help them with their hairstyles and makeup. We had a little boutique where they could come in and select three donated goods and take them home. It delighted them. We had yoga, and we had massage. And, and as we were having this day, I had a chance to talk to many of them, to engage them in conversation. And I'm really feeling that I'm knowing the homeless issue much better than I would if I were sitting in a hearing room, listening to people talk about homelessness. At the end of our retreat, we had a butterfly release, and it was, was really fantastic.
That's very sweet.
They were happy.
Can I, can I ask you this, though? On, on that homeless question, all four counties have essentially failed to deal with the problem of illegal vacation rentals, and many people feel like that's driving up the cost of living, which obviously contributes then to more people not being able to afford a home. What could or should the legislature do to deal with this problem? I'll start with you.
With the homeless problem? I'm sorry.
No, with the illegal vacation rentals.
We moved on to another subject.
Oh, sorry. I missed that. Well, this is with the Airbnb, is that what you're talking about?
Right.
Yes. You know, because tourism is our number-one source of income, is our number-one in our economy, it's very important that we respect and follow the rules. And I feel that if the hotels are required to abide by the TAT, then so should these so-called illegal Airbnbs, they should be reported. If that's, if I understand correctly, is a city and county issue, is that correct, Marilyn?
Well, it's a city and county issue, but it's also a state issue, as I see it. And, you know, the problem is, as I, is, as I've heard in discussing it, is that each island has different, different rules. And then this year, the state did put forth a bill. It didn't pass final reading, but the House and the Senate couldn't agree on it. But they, you know, they almost came close to passing it. So it's really a huge problem, but I see that everybody is interested in solving it. And I, I believe that it does add to the homeless problem, and I think that it is something that brings up the rents. I mean, we, you can't find a decent rental anyplace in Mililani. I mean, really.
In Mililani, it's very high. And I'm just thinking, you know, sorry, this might be a tangent back to the homeless issue. I think the one thing that I've noticed is that we can't, we can't find a one-size-fit-all answer to homelessness, as we see in different, different areas. There's different types of homelessness and different reasons for homelessness. We, we have mental health issues or drug addictions that lead to homelessness. We have homeless people who are working but just pretty much unfortunately houseless. So I think to solve, or to not address, to solve, but to address the homeless issue, what we need to do is go to the specific areas and find ways that we can, within that area, you know, promote programs. We can't just keep on putting money into a one-size-fit-all program. We need to find areas that, what can we do in Mililani? Are the homeless in Mililani are different from the homeless, you know, and why not?
Well, what do you think can be done for the homeless in Mililani?
Yeah, I think from what I, you know, my understanding in Mililani is that most of the homeless people are there, they are dealing with mental health issues. And as a former special education teacher, is very, you know, I've worked with children who had mental health issues, and I think educating them and getting them properly medicated and properly taken care of will help solve their mental health issues, or at least address it and help them on their way. And I think when we do that, then we can better prepare them for getting them off of the streets and better prepared, getting to the workforce. I think education will always be that equalizer. You can educate people in one way or another, whether it's, again, with mental health or in getting them a career. That's what I think, I would, I would like to focus on.
I don't agree with those Ohana zones. And I, I agree with what, what you're saying, is you can't lump all the people, homeless people into one. As a nurse, I know you can't put all people who come into the ER into the same basket, and you have to triage them, and I think that's a very important thing. You have to decide who's in need of mental health, who just needs a little push to get a job or find a house, who, who needs help with dysfunction in their family. There's so many different kinds of things that affect homeless people. We have a new nonprofit in our central Oahu area, it's called A'Lea Bridge, and it's really something special. It was started by a policeman, Joe Acosta, and it's really something because they've gone, they've gone to the legislature, they've gotten a couple of grant nades, and they're going to start building a center in Wahihua, and that will be offering counseling, it'll be offering places to do your laundry.
Well, other than private initiatives, initiatives like that, if it's not Ohana zones, what can the ledge actually do?
Oh, what can the ledge do except, well, they can actually appropriate more money for mental health care, for one. I think that's a big lack in our community. If you want to go to Mililani and ask where can you go to find a mental health practitioner, you aren't going to find it. When I was at Wahihua Hospital, if we had somebody who needed mental health care, we had to get somebody from town, and psychiatrists don't want to come out to, to Wahihua Hospital to, to tell us that we can admit a person into someplace like Kanoe. So it's, you know, the lack of mental health care in the community is appalling, really.
We still have more viewer questions, and this one's for Valerie. As a Republican, do you support the policies of Donald Trump?
I get asked that again, door to door. I personally have always respected and supported the, the office of the president. And while I may not personally support every policy that he puts into place, I, I feel that he has done well, especially with tax cuts and his tax package. He has helped our economy. I want to, you know, the thing that I've noticed, again, while walking door to door, is the, the lack of respect that I feel is often put towards our, our office of the president. And I shouldn't say this at every home, but again, I've always supported the office of the president, been respectful. I feel that ironically, we teach this in our schools, to be respectful despite our differences. We teach it to the children, yet for some reason, adults don't seem to practice the same thing. So while I don't always, you know, support everything that he does, I do support many of his policies, and I, I've respected him as the president and his office. And I, I think we could learn a lot from the children by being respectful despite our differences.
Well, the, the head of the Republican Party in Hawaii lives in Mililani as well, and she has stated very strongly that she supports Trump and that the party supports Trump. I believe in respect for the president as well. I don't agree with him.
As a Democrat, I expect not. You know, we're seeing striking hotel workers in Waikiki and on Maui. They say, really, it comes down to one person, one job, that one person should be able to live here in Hawaii, working a full-time job, and that they are not able to survive on that. Instead, they need two or three. What are your thoughts on that premise? Do we need to raise the minimum wage? How do we address this issue of people having to work two, three jobs to actually make it?
I absolutely support raising the minimum wage or, or creating a living wage. The question is, what is a living wage? A lot of people these days are looking at $15, but that's really not going to be enough to help some people exist without a second job. But hotel workers work very, very hard. They, they have an exhausting day, and, you know, some of them work two and three jobs a day. So we really need to be more supportive of our people in our service industries. And I think the fact that they're striking means that they're actually quite desperate about this issue of having no life because they're always working.
Right. But a small business owner might say, you know, if you have a living wage at $22 or $25, I have to close my doors. What would you say to that?
Well, in the, in the past, there've been exemptions for some of the small business owners if they have less than a certain number. So that would be something that we'd have to work on, but most of the people that we're talking about in the hotel industry are the employees of huge corporations. Not only are they huge corporations, but they're huge corporations whose, whose actual offices are on the mainland, and a lot of the money that's being made by the hotel is going back to the owners on the mainland.
I've heard, I've heard, you know, again, people in our community who are small business owners and the effect of this $15 minimum wage, what it would do to their business. And it is, you know, an issue that concerns me because while I feel that with the high cost of living here, we need to compensate the workers, I would like to still keep our local businesses open. And when you brought the strike, I have a, a soft spot in my heart for a strike, for strikes, because my first year of teaching was a teacher's strike.
That's right.
And I feel unfortunately that there's no winner in, when, you know, organizations go on strike. There right now, it would be nice to see the workers and the management come together and come to terms, because while they're on strike, just like when I was a teacher, the students lost out, and at this time, our tourism industry, which is our number-one source of, in our economy, is suffering. So I, I think it's an unfortunate situation. I understand that it's part of it, but I would like to see it. And just like, just as I had, like, I wanted to see our teacher's strike and...
Well, nobody likes, likes a strike. I grew up, my father was a factory worker, and he went on strike a number of times, and it was very difficult for our family when he did. I come from a working-class neighborhood, from immigrant neighborhood, actually. And, you know, we went through a lot of that. It was really hard. We often didn't have as much as we wanted to eat, and we couldn't have as much as we wanted to wear. And it's, it's difficult. And, you know, I don't think most of the hotel workers are lacking for food or clothing, but I, I think a lot of them are really struggling. So I, I would support their issues, but I hope it doesn't go on long. Nobody wants, like you say...
Yeah, nobody does.
No, because it's hurting the, it is hurting the tourism business, too. Although many people would say, we've got too many tourists here.
Well, back to that issue of a living wage, and we are running out of time. But the, the issue of a living wage, if, if it's not that, then how do we get it so that people don't have to work two and three jobs?
Right. No, I always go back to education being the equalizer, you know. We need to, of course, compensate people for what they're qualified to do, but I'll always advocate for, whether it's a trade or an education, a degree in college, to get people educated in the fields that they're wanting to go into, and that way we can get them their, their qualified jobs and compensate them correctly. I don't have an answer for the minimum wage. I don't support the $15 minimum wage at this time because I feel like it would affect, again, our small business owners, and then in turn, the cost be put down, brought down to the consumers, and that's us. And that will, again, increase the money that comes out of our pockets, and we're already struggling day to day as it is.
We have just a few minutes left, so I do want to get...
Just one comment that, you know, with a raise in, in the wages, there would be more money put into the economy because people would be able to purchase more. So, you know, they'd purchase from small businesses as well, so there is another side to that.
We have just a few minutes, and I know that the two of you have been, you know, spending, expending a lot of shoe leather, going door to door, meeting with different community groups. What's the one thing, you know, and I'll ask each of you, what's the one thing that you wish that voters knew about you that maybe they can't find out from Google, that they can't, you know, that they don't easily glean? Marilyn, we'll start with you.
Oh, well, actually, one of the things that happens to be almost every day is somebody recognizes me. I can hardly go anyplace without being recognized, and people speak to me, and they call me my name, and that's lovely, a lovely thing to, to happen. But the one thing that, that I, I wish people would know about me is that even though I am a kupuna, I'm, I'm not incompetent. I'm a pretty sharp lady. I'm very strong. I'm physically fit. I walk my dog. I do my gardening, and if they think I, you know, I read the comments in the newspaper, and some of them are kind of mean, and some of them they're based on, they're really ageism. And I'd like them to know that, you know, I'm, although I am the age I am, I'm proud to be a kupuna.
Okay, great. And Mrs. Okimoto, what about you?
I think the one thing I would like, you know, the voters, the people out there to know about me is that I'm not a trained career politician. I am just like them. I am a neighbor, I'm a mother, I'm a wife, and my desire to serve and run for public office stems nowhere in my desire to promote myself. It really has always been to be a voice for the people in our community. I feel like there's been a lack of trust in our government. I felt that, and I find there's lots of people in our community who feel the same way. So although, you know, I'm a newcomer, as I've been told, I've been called a rookie, I'm very passionate and I work hard, I learn quick. And although, you know, as a teacher, we say it's not where you start, it's where you end up, and what better place to start than right here? And my desire and my goal, as soon as I get into office, will always be to represent the people, to be their voice. I think they're ready for a fresh change, a new start, and that's me.
Okay, well, thank you both.
I, I always listen to the people, and that's why I'm part of the Neighborhood Board. That's why I go to the meetings every month, both Maoka and Mililani Town, and that's why I participate in things like the Lions, the Seraphimists, I work with the A'Lea Bridge. I am out with the people, and I listen to the people, and I love helping and serving the people.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you to you both. That's all the time we have for this portion of Insights. We, of course, want to thank our guests Marilyn B. Lee and Val Okimoto. We're going to do a quick change now. We'll return in just a few minutes to hear from the two candidates running for the Hawaii Island Council District 7. Please enjoy this Hikino story from Konowaina High School. We'll be right back.
Located on the leeward side of the big island of Hawaii in Captain Cook is the popular Minago Hotel and Restaurant. Starting in 1917 with only $100, the Minagos have made themselves a well-known business. With 62 units and a busy restaurant, Dwight Minago, the owner, tells us the story of the Minago Hotel.
When I came back from the, from Oahu and from being at the Manalani Bay Hotel, I had all these ideas of changing everything. I wanted to modernize, I wanted to do a lot of things. However, the first thing that happened to me was my customers came and told me, if you start changing anything, we're not going to come back. So the message is, keep it to the original state, keep it simple, keep it natural, and most of all, nostalgic. And that's basically been our success.
Minago is a unique place on the big island and has different meaning and sentiments for its customers and employees. For some, Minago is more than just a workplace.
What makes Minago special? Probably the staff, the people, the visitors that come and go. You meet a lot of them. The staff is very friendly, they're a group, great group to work with. The owners are the Minago family, and they treat us like family.
While Minago is popular for its old-fashioned charm, casual atmosphere, and reasonable pricing, what Minago is really known for is their pork chops.
Well, the favorite thing about the hotel restaurant would be the comments we get about the pork chops. It's the local favorite. In fact, what we've had to do was from the original order that we use, that we still do serve, which is about 11 ounces, we've had to now go into a one and a half order, which is currently between 16 and 17 ounces. And the funny thing about it is, even the women are ordering that now.
If walls could talk, they would tell of the diverse guests that have visited the Minago Hotel.
We've had Charles Lindbergh visit us. We've also had Priscilla Presley, Elvis Presley's ex-wife, and Bill Pullman, who are some of the known celebrities that we've had visit us. If you look at the restaurants, if you look at hotels, you see them come and go. However, we've been the one operation that's been running for almost 100 years, and that's something that I'm very proud of. And hopefully, we'll go into a fourth generation and continue that legacy.
Well, I'm in the mood for pork chops now. This is Austin Hawk reporting from Konowaina High School for Hikino.
Aloha and welcome back. For this next half hour, we're featuring the two nonpartisan candidates running for the Hawaii Island County Council District 7 seat, which includes portions of both North and South Kona. Please continue to email, call, or tweet your questions. You'll find a livestream of this program at PBS You'll find a live stream of this program at pbshawaii.org and on the PBS Hawaii Facebook page. Our volunteers are still here, so please do keep them busy. Now to our guests, who are both political newcomers. Rebecca Viejas was born and raised on Hawaii Island and is currently a marketing and events manager. She volunteers for a number of community organizations. Kelly Drysdale is the director of logistics for local business in Kailua Kona. She lives there as well. She, too, sits on several boards and community organizations. Welcome to you both. You both, obviously, as we noted, are newcomers, so we have to ask, what inspired each of you to run? We'll start with you.
Sure. Growing up, I've always had kind of a civic mind and been involved in a lot of different community organizations and activities, spoken in a lot of land use commission hearings and county council hearings. So it's always been something close to my heart, public service, and just really a community stewardship. So as I've progressed through life, this is kind of feels like a really appropriate next step, an opportunity to have an official job as a public servant. So I'm excited for this opportunity, and I'm hopeful.
Okay, and what inspired you to jump in the race?
Well, I've been speaking with a lot of our community members over many of the years, and a lot of their concerns also concerned me. And we've talked through some of these concerns and tried to figure out solutions. And in doing so, I also would communicate with our council people, some of those, the adversities that we're facing in our community. And so I thought, you know, well, gosh, if I'm submitting all of my thoughts to them, why shouldn't I be in the seat itself? So that's when I decided to choose to run as well.
And when you look at the, when you look at your community, given that you have been active as an advocate, tell me, what do you think is the biggest issue? What was the first thing that you'd like the council to address?
Oh, mosh, there's a lot of stuff. I mean, I don't know if all of it's council-related because I've already been working on some issues involving getting a physician assistant school, running program there. And obviously, the homeless is a big issue. And I saw the special that you did on Kahauiki here, Village, and I thought that was remarkable. So that would be something that would be a really, really good step for us to try to duplicate in our community as well. And, you know, I've been working on trying to get a regional park built for about the last 10 years, and, you know, some other business interests, get people more educated in recycling, and some other, some other stuff, some businesses that we can get up and running in our community as well.
What about you? What do you think is the biggest issue facing your community? What do you want the council to address first?
Well, one of the things I'd like to start working on is we have a mandate to transition from cesspools to septic tanks. Now, one of the challenges we're facing with the geology of our island is it's not really conducive to transitioning to septic, to septic tanks, especially with the need for a leach field. However, there are some opportunities for us to reduce the amount of water we're using and potentially make it a little easier for people to incorporate gray water systems, to enzymize people, to utilize low-flow showers, low-flow toilets, low-flow sinks. So in the interim, as we continue to identify the best technology to transition from the cesspools to septic tanks, we can also be making strides to make it easier for people to reduce their water consumption, thus reducing the water being put into the current cesspools and reducing the amount of potential contamination to groundwater and oceans. And as Kelly said, our houseless, homeless situation is, it's grown tremendously over the last couple of decades. It's a statewide issue. It's a national issue, and it's a global issue. However, I feel that in Kona, we have an opportunity because we're kind of a microcosm of the world at large. And so based on relationship building and really understanding the population of people, because it's such a diverse community, from those with addiction issues to those with mental health issues, to vagrants. And there's a difference between somebody that's houseless and somebody that's a vagrant. And so strides are being made, and they have identified property on the big island and are looking to build Village Nine and provide wraparound services for the families and individuals who really do want help and would participate and would accept kind of the direction and the parameters around receiving that kind of help. Because downtown is struggling. It's affecting our small businesses. It's affecting the perception of visitors that arrive, you know, on planes and on the ships, and it's affecting safety. And small businesses are a real, you know, lifeblood for downtown Kona, which I hold very close to my heart. So there are numerous issues, and I'm excited for the opportunity to collaborate with those that are currently in public office. And the community members that know the issues best oftentimes know and have ideas for solutions.
What's your take on the homeless issue? Do you think Village Nine is the solution? What do you think should the community be doing to address that?
I think that Village Nine is a solution. I'm not sure that it's the immediate solution because they still haven't done the EA, which is the environmental assessment. They haven't done the PER, the preliminary engineering report. They haven't put out the bids for buildings. So all of that takes time. And in the interim, I think there are some, there are some solutions that we could, that we could, that we could interject into, into what the problem is right now.
What specifically do you think could be done?
Well, there are some areas that they could modify and make them into temporary, or if not, maybe even full-time housing situations, just to get some of the people that are like technically and literally on the street and on the roads, and put them under roof and give them housing of sort that has accommodations for restrooms and showers and kitchens and stuff like that. And we have, we have some places that could be intermediary solutions to that at present. But, I mean, it's going to take a little bit of modification in order for it to come to fruition. But I think that there are some options that we could look at immediately.
We have voter question, or viewer questions, potential voter questions.
We hope they're voters.
Harold from Kailaka Kua is asking, "How should Kona's hospitality and visitor industry grow to sustain a society that will benefit all members of the community?" We'll start with you.
Hmm, that's a good question. Because I envision, and I hope for the future of the big island, to diversify some of our economic dependence on the visitor industry. We can do that through diversifying the number of experiences that people have as well. It will and remain, you know, one of our most significant contributors to our economy. However, especially with the recent lava flow incidences and the losses on the big island and how it affected businesses when our visitor industry took a downturn, I think there's some opportunity for some diversification, for some forward thinking, for some new technologies, for some new industries, and for the potential for us to be a little more self-sufficient and supporting one another. I worked for the Kona Brewing Company for 14 years, and that brand kind of defied a prior belief system that you could not manufacture a product in Hawaii and be successful. And so I think there's some opportunity for us to get creative and to find our niches. And we've got amazing agriculture. We have phenomenal artists. There's this movement in Hawaii in general for clothing makers and jewelry designers. And now our energy options are coming up as well. So I think we're at a really exciting time to identify some different ways to, while continuing to take care of our visitors and greet everyone and treat everyone with aloha, that we also could incentivize ourselves and provide opportunities for us to be a little more self-sufficient economically.
What would you say to Harold and Kailaka Kua? How can we grow this industry to include more citizens?
Well, I think diversification, as Rebecca just stated, is key because we have new technologies. We have new ways that we can bring in different businesses. For instance, Camilo Beach, also known as Trash Beach down south, washes ashore tons and tons of plastics a year. There's a woman that goes down there, and she sorts through it, and she makes jewelry out of it. There's a company in UK called McReber who takes plastics and puts them, makes them into roadways. So, I mean, there's all sorts of diversifications that we could do to implement different types of businesses versus just the hospitality industry.
This ties into hospitality. It ties in also, in some ways, to homelessness, and it ties into cost of living. So this kind of goes to all of it. Jeffrey, not in the district, he's in Volcano, but he wants to know, what is your position on the current vacation rental policy? My guess is that he's asking specifically about illegal vacation rentals. We'll start with you.
Well, they, actually, I was just reading about a woman who wrote into West Hawaii Today who said that when the times got tough, she had to actually turn her home into a vacation rental. So it's a double-edged sword, really. I think they're handling it to the best of their ability. And one of our councilmen said, "When both sides are equally unhappy, then we will have struck the right chord." And unfortunately, that tends to be the truth because nobody's going to be happy with the ultimate decision that comes down. And I think that, yes, people do utilize their homes to have the income that they need. And then there's other people that are not being very respectful of their neighbors in their renting out, and they're not there to, so to speak, police their renters. So if they come down on that and make some sort of, I don't know, I'm not sure exactly how they're proposing the final draft because it's gone through several stages. But I think that if they were to, I mean, if you hit people where it hurts the most in the pocketbook, that's usually where people will tend to make the concessions.
What's your position on the illegal vacation rentals right now?
I think he's referring to Bill 108, which was actually in front of the county council again yesterday and received a lot of testimony. My understanding of the bill is that the intention for it being written and created is because there has been a big issue on the big island with neighborhoods that have become inundated by houses that were purchased as investment properties and then are being utilized as vacation rentals. Now, when people are on vacation there, they aren't always the best neighbor. They're up late, in the pool, making noise, and adversely affecting the people that call that neighborhood their home. And so the intention of the bill was to try and, and mind you, we are the only county in the state of Hawaii that does not currently have legislature related to vacation rentals and Airbnbs. And these are short-term vacation rentals, mind you. And so the intention is to put something on the books and then to start moving in, you know, it may need more tweaks, and it already has had some revisions as people have presented. There are such a variety of circumstances when you have zoning issues, from resort zoning to commercial zoning to residential zoning. But the intention of the bill was never to deny people who are currently running hosted vacation rental spaces and live on the property. The intention is not to stop that, and it's not to prohibit people from making money off of, you know, renting an ohana or having an Airbnb.
Right, so if you live there, you have a bed and breakfast, that, you think that that is okay?
If it's in, if it's in a, if it's in a zoning that you're not supposed to, you'd be able to get a non-conforming use permit. However, the intention is to, we also have housing shortages on the big island and, which thus contributes to, well, affordable housing and then houselessness. So it's all really tied together. But the intention of this bill is not to harm those that need to rent out their spaces in order to supplement their income. We all know that that's one of the only ways to afford a mortgage in Hawaii now. The intention is to create some parameters and to eliminate some of the abuse. It currently is a state law that if you have a vacation rental and you do not live on property, you have to have a licensed real estate agent that's managing the property. But as more and more people are coming out and telling their unique stories about the house in their neighborhood that they're having challenges with, it's becoming more evident that it's the cleaning lady that's the, you know, responsible party. And she doesn't have, or he doesn't have, a real estate license. Or if there even is someone, they try and call them in the middle of the night. There's just nobody there to call. So people are very frustrated when they can't get a good night's sleep, or when the parking's, you know, all kapakai in their neighborhood, and there's nobody to call. There's no accountable party on premise, or sometimes even in the state.
We have a question about development, and I know that, you know, you drive through Kona, and it looks a lot different. I feel like, every time I go home to the big island, there's another big bookstore. Roger was writing in saying, "How do the candidates feel about development, specifically about the building of high rises?" We'll start with you.
Well, I think we have a zoning that states that we can't go above a certain height.
And is that something that you agree with maintaining?
Well, for our aesthetics, yeah. I think we're not Oahu. We're the big island, and we have a lot of land that we, that we put aside specifically for, in perpetuity, so it doesn't get developed. That was the intention behind the 2% that's been passed that we've been living with for some time. Development, we have, right now, we had a Kmart that just went out, so we have a huge opening there. We had a Sports Authority that went out, so we have another huge opening there. So if he has some tenants that he'd like to throw into those openings, I'm sure that the commercial realtors would be very appreciative. But as far as development, I'm not sure specifically. I know, I know definitively, we need affordable housing. And that's why when I was mentioning the Kahauiki Village, I thought that was a great beta program for somebody to replicate in our community.
Well, if only we could clone Dwayne Crease.
Yeah, that too.
Well, what was your, what's your response to Rogers? How do you feel about developing high rises in Kona?
I don't think they're necessary. I think high rises are often a, an outcome of there being a shortage of land. Mind you, I'm not particularly keen on urban sprawl either. However, I don't feel that there's a need for high rises on the big island or in Kona at this time. I'm definitely a strong proponent for sustainable and responsible development with a triple bottom line responsibility factor in there, and that being taking into consideration people, the community that's affected, the place, the environment, and then profit also. And then taking a fourth level is looking at future generations because the decisions we're making now affect our kids and our grandkids. And I'll be a grandma in the new year, and it really drives home the responsibility and the opportunity and the kuliana that's involved in these opportunities to make decisions. And my belief in responsible development and is taking into consideration the stakeholders, and the stakeholders being everyone that's affected by whatever the development is, or whatever the business is, or even the county in general, taking into consideration the stakeholders and not just the shareholders, not just the owners. So taking into consideration, how does it affect everyone that is touched by whatever project or development, be it a high rise? I'm grateful that we, the tallest building we have currently on the Kona side is seven stories. And I believe the current limit is three. And I think it's good.
You know, both of you are obviously very engaged in the issues. You're passionate about your community. What sets you apart from each other? What sets you apart from your opponent?
I was born and raised on the big island. I was actually born in the Old Hilo Hospital and raised on the Kona side. I graduated from Kona Waina. My mom graduated from Kona Waina. I'm actually fifth generation in the islands. So my long-term dedication and connectivity and relationship with the place and the people and the culture, I believe that that sets me apart in my capacity to be able to identify resources, human resources, physical tangible resources, financial resources, and being a conduit for the opportunities for solutions for the issues. You know, in Hawaii, we talk first, and we get to know one another, and then we do business afterwards. Sometimes you've got to go slow in order to go fast. And this is a big job, and it's, I'm humbled to even be asking my community to vote me into this position. I know I will continue to have a lot to learn. I have worked with a number of the people that are currently on the county council. I've collaborated with business members and owners and council members and other county employees to execute other major projects, including Kohaniki Beach Park and getting a park built there, a county park. And so I think that I have the legacy of servant leadership in my community and the legacy of aloha and connectivity. And I think that that behooves our community. The county council has really grown to be a more collaborative, joint, working together. There were years when it wasn't always that way. And so I'm excited for the opportunity, and I'm hopeful that I'll be voted into office and have the opportunity to participate in that continued collaborative, positive momentum.
What about you? What do you think sets you apart?
Well, I wasn't born here, but I was made here.
I like that.
I think what sets us apart is the fact that I have a little bit different background and diversity in some of the business adventures and some of the experiences that I've had in business, as a business person, working in television, actually. I've worked on the other side of the camera where I'm more comfortable because I'm more comfortable doing than I am talking. So I think that I, we do have many similarities, but our differences are, Rebecca has been, I think she had mentioned one time, invited to participate as a candidate, whereas I chose to participate as a candidate. invited to participate as a candidate, whereas I chose to participate as a candidate. And I think the diversity of my background also is good for our community because our community is so diversified.
What do you see as the biggest flaws, the way the council operates in its current form, and what would you do to fix it?
That's a good question. I'm not sure that their communication to the community is as good as it could be. I know that they post their minutes and everything, like everything from all of their meetings online. But a lot of times, laymen don't get that language. So, I think if they could communicate more in layman's terms, that people would be more involved and more willing to understand what the council does. There's a lot of times that, you know, people don't even want to become involved in council because, or anything to do with government because they think that their voice won't be heard. And that was one of the reasons why I chose my tagline, "People's Voice, People's Choice," is because I want to represent my constituents. I want to hear what they have to say and bring what their concerns are to the council and try to get resolution for those.
I want to ask you the same question and just know that we only have a few minutes left, and I have one more question after that. So, what do you think is the biggest fix the council really needs?
Okay. For starters, I just would like to say that I was invited to run by my kupuna. And for me, that felt most appropriate and most approachable for this position because I don't have a desire for necessarily the power or to be a politician. I view the position as a public servant. And so, it felt most pono to me to be invited and asked to come and to put, as Kelly will tell you, this is a challenge, running for office. It's very vulnerable. It's awkward in many times. I don't know that I feel comfortable saying what I think that the council should change. I think that it's always easier to point out faults and issues. But if voted into this position, I think that there's a responsibility to be open and to learn and to be humble as I would enter this because I don't know all of the different nuances that come with the job. And it would just feel a little bit egomaniacal to go in and say, "This is what I'm going to fix," when it really is, the job is to represent the constituents. It's to represent the people who live in District 7. And that is the key responsibility, and to listen and take their concerns and vote accordingly, and then to work collaboratively with the other council members and to identify the ways that we all can continue to improve because that's what life's about.
We have just two minutes, so I want to make sure that each of you get a chance to answer this. But, you know, it's a big district, and so, you can't necessarily meet every single voter. What do you wish people knew about you, that they might not be able to glean from Google or what have you? We'll start with you. This is the closing thought.
Okay. My heart is for Kona. It's my truest intention to serve the people of my community. I feel it part of my life path and part of my purpose. I currently have an empty nest. And so, I'm really excited for the opportunity to commit myself even more deeply and to get involved at this level of community service, which is the closest level of government to the people, is serving on the county council. And so, I would like them to know that my door will be open and my ear will always be open. And communication and connectivity is where the solutions lie for all of us because it's through that collaborative effort and that connectivity that we can identify solutions to the challenges because they change constantly. And as the volcano and Pele recently showed us, things can change, you know, in a moment. And so, being connected to one another.
Okay. And what do you wish people knew about you?
Well, a few things. One is that I really didn't seek any endorsements because I do not want to be beholden to anyone or anything, any entity other than my constituents. I was born and raised with the golden rule. I live it, breathe it. And I think that honesty and principles and morals are part of my fabric. And I think that I could bring a lot to the council with the things that I know in my background and with the honesty that I would just like to share.
Okay. Well, fantastic. Thank you so much, both of you, for flying over here, for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Mahalo to you for joining us. We thank our guests Rebecca Vegas and Kelly Drysdale. Next week, we take a break from Insights to hold our next live COCO, Hawaii's Town Hall Meeting. The topic is the future of work. It's a fascinating one. Join us for an insightful conversation about how technology will change work as we know it today. That's a week from tonight, from 8:00 to 10:00 PM, right here. Then, Insights will be back November 1st with two more election contests. At 8:00 PM, we feature the US Senate race between incumbent Democrat Mazie Hirono and her Republican challenger, Ron Curtis. Then, at 8:30, we look at the race for the Kahului seat on the Maui County Council. That's between current Maui Mayor Alan Arakawa and Natalie Kama. Until then, I'm Yanji Denise for Insights on PBS Hawaii. Aloha and ahuiho.